Can I have a motion?
A move we approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? All abstain? I was not there. Okay. Item two is the Ramshead subdivision amendment. Ramshead Partners Limited Liability Company is requesting an amendment to the previously approved Ramshead subdivision located at the end of Charles Jordan Road, I guess it was formerly known as Cod Rock Road and Windship Road, to replace Wellwater with connection to a four-inch private water line for all four lots. The application will require review under section 16-2-5 amendments to previously approved subdivisions. Now, this application has been placed on the consent agenda, so if a board member wishes to have a substantive discussion of the application, they would need to make a motion to move the application to the regular agenda. Otherwise, a motion for approval is in order. Does anyone wish to move this to the regular meeting? Okay, so can I have a motion?
Motion for the board to consider, be it ordered that based on the plan and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Ramshead Partners Limited Liability Company for an amendment to the previously approved Ramshead subdivision located at the end of Charles E. Jordan Road, Cod Rock Road and Windship Road, be to replace Wellwater with a connection to a four-inch private water line for all four lots be approved under section 16-2-5 of the subdivision ordinance as a consent agenda item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. The next item on the agenda is 51 Ocean House Road Resource Protection Permit. Jay Cox and Bill Royal doing business as Maxwell Cove LLC are requesting a private road approval and private accessway permit for shared access for an existing lot located at 51 Ocean House Road and a new lot to be located at the rear of 51 Ocean House Road. They're also requesting a resource protection permit to provide a gravity sewer connection to the rear lot. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 19-7 Private Road and Private Accessways and section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Permit. So we'll begin, the applicant will summarize changes made to the plan since the last meeting.
Good evening. My name is Jay Cox. I'm here from Maxwell Cove. Based on various input we received after our first meeting, we've made some modifications. The site plan was updated to incorporate recommendations of Mr. Harding via his memo of 11 March specifically. The riprap in this area was modified slightly because now, I think it's two feet of riprap, and then this area was widened to slow water flow on the discharge side of the culvert. All instances of cadence wave on the plans have been changed to cadence wave level in a positive to comply with the town road naming standards. This is the Rosendo property right here at the bottom. These five serbius spruce were added. This was what they requested be done. There's about 40 feet of evergreen buffering along the property line on this site plan. And then on both plans, there's a short section of setback line added right here. There was a gap previously. That's been corrected. And then there's a note added to both plans stating that no building will be constructed outside of the building envelope. And then also a note on both plans clarifying the grandfather rights for the location of the old building, that those expire if there's been no building permit for two-years dated destruction and only to the extent that it's actually used in any new building that's placed there. The turnaround was modified. This section was widened to 40 feet, no, to 28 feet, I think. Yeah, 28 feet, I believe. To ensure that a B-40 vehicle can turn here, keeping the wheels on the gravel or pavement or this ends up being. And also, this right-of-way was narrowed up slightly. And that was reviewed by the town engineer and also the fire chief and public works And also, we clarified our request for having the option of bringing the sewer to 77 or down via gravity down to this sewer main to the southwest. And also, we are requesting a resource protection permit to go through this wetland in this area if we decide to go that way. The decision on which way to go will be made at the time of construction. There's also some additional changes that need to be made. Mr. Harding pointed out a couple more things that need to be done here, and those will certainly be made before we proceed in any way. And that's really what I have for tonight. I'm ready to answer any questions.
Are you requesting that those changes be conditions? Or are you planning to come back?
No, I prefer to see those as conditions and get that cleaned up and deliver to the town.
Okay, thank you. That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this issue? Nope. Okay. Seeing no one here, I will close the public hearing. All right. Does any member of the board have any questions for the applicant? No. I have one. Can you just specify what those items are? Is that in our packet somewhere that I missed?
The town engineer's comments?
Yes. The requests to add to the conditions.
Those would be on, it should be included in the back of the memo, letter dated April 10th.
Did you include it in the conditions of approval?
In the conditions of approval, the first condition states that the plans be revised to address the town engineer's comments in the letter dated April 10, 2019.
Okay, great.
I do have the list if you want me to go through them.
Do you guys want to hear it?
Mike, yeah.
Yeah, let's hear it.
So on the original plan, we had a note that any connection to the sewer in 77 would be with the approval of the public works director. And we will modify that to state that regardless of which way we go, the connection will be acceptable to the public works director. So that was one. And then there is a reference on, I have to look and see if it's the site plan or the plan of Cadence Way, but there.
Just the dewatering.
Well, there's actually, on the plan of Cadence Way, there's a reference to Note 11, but there's actually two Note 11s. So we'll specify survey Note 11, just for clarification. And then the name Cadence Way, sorry about this. Cadence Way will be written on the road that's missing here on both plans. And dewatering notes and details on the site plan in the construction notes will add dewatering notes to clarify how this will be dewatered if the trenches dug that way. And then that's the list that I have.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Charlie, just one aspect was that this was here last month for a motion on completeness. And I think at that time, I think it was a member, Carolyn Jordan, who commented on the thoroughness of the application at that time. And since that time, we've also received these new materials and taken a site walk. So based upon that, I have some findings of fact for the motion for the board to consider. Number one, Jay Cox and Bill Royal doing business as Maxwell Cove LLC are requesting private road and private access permit approval for Cadence Way to provide access for two lots located at 51 Ocean House Road and a new lot to be located at the rear of 51 Ocean House Road, as well as a resource protection permit for up to 500 square feet of temporary alteration to an RP2 wetland to provide a gravity sewer connection to Lot 2, which requires review under section 19-7-9 Private Road and Private Accessways and section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Permit. Number two, Cadence Way will not result in undue water pollution. The private road is not located in a 100-year floodplain. Soils will support the proposed uses. The slope of the land, proximity to streams, and the state and local water resource rules and regulations will not be compromised by the construction of Cadence Way. Number three, Cadence Way will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion control plan provided. Number four, Cadence Way will not cause unreasonable road congestion or unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic. Cadence Way provides the road network connectivity while discouraging through traffic. Cadence Way is laid out to conform to existing topography as much as is feasible. Cadence Way is designed to meet town standards, which waivers granted for right-of-way reduction from 50 feet to 35 feet and a travel way reduction from 22 feet to 14 feet with two feet wide shoulders. The waivers are granted because a private road will serve no more than two lots, and the waiver will allow the scale of the development to be more compatible with the adjacent neighborhood. Number five, Cadence Way will not have an undue adverse impact on scenic or natural areas, historic sites, significant wildlife habitat, rare natural areas, or public access to the shoreline. Number six, Cadence Way is compatible with applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan and town ordinance. Number seven, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Number eight, Cadence Way will not adversely impact surface water quality. Number nine, Cadence Way will not adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Number 10, Cadence Way is not located in a floodplain. Number 11, Cadence Way is in compliance with the town wetland regulations and the zoning ordinance. Number 12, the design of Cadence Way will provide for adequate storm water management. Number 13, Cadence Way is not located within the watershed of Great Pond and therefore will have no impact on phosphorus levels. Number 14, Cadence Way is not located on land where liquidation harvesting was conducted. Number 15, Cadence Way will include access to utilities. Number 16, the Cadence Way private accessway shall provide access to more than one dwelling unit and related accessory buildings and uses. Number 17, the Cadence Way private accessway shall be located within a dedicated right-of-way having a width of 30 feet. Number 18, the subbase shall be constructed with gravel meetings, excuse me, meeting MDOT specification 703-06 type D with a depth of at least 15 inches and having a width of at least 18 feet. Number 19, the travel way shall be constructed with a minimum of three inches of crushed gravel having a width of at least 14 feet with the remaining width of gravel base loomed and seeded. Number 20, within 10 feet of the edge of Ocean House Road, the private road portion of Cadence Way shall be paved with three inches of asphalt paving. The maximum grade within the first 50 feet of the edge of the street paving shall not exceed 5 percent. Pavement radius at the intersection with the street shall be 20 feet. Number 21, gutter drainage, excuse me, along Cadence Way shall be allowed to sheet across the face of the intersection with Ocean House Road, and the proposed design will keep drainage from the private accessway from running into the public street. Number 22, a turnaround is proposed to meet the requirements of the fire chief. Number 23, Cadence Way is located so that site distance conforms to requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Number 24, the Cadence Way private accessway shall serve only one lot. Number 25, the planning board has not reduced the private accessway requirements of section 19-7-9D4 to a lesser standard. Number 26, adequate disposal sewage shall be provided as evidenced by connection to the public sewage system. Number 27, the building envelope is depicted wherein the house and accessory buildings will be located on the lot demonstrating conformance with the setback requirements of the district in which it is located and any natural constraints, and that the house site will be buffered from abutting residential properties. Number 28, the temporary wetland alteration will not material obstruct the flow of surface or subsurface waters across or from the alternation area. Number 29, a temporary wetland alteration will not impound surface waters to reduce the absorptive capacity of the alteration area so as to or increase the flooding of adjacent properties and should include temporary dewatering measures during construction. Number 30, a temporary wetland alteration will not increase the flow of surface waters across or the drainage of surface waters from the alteration area so as to threaten injure, or as to threaten injury, excuse me, to the alteration area or to upstream and/or downstream lands by flooding, draining, erosion, sedimentation, and/or otherwise. Number 31, the temporary wetland alteration will not result in significant damage to spawning grounds or habitat for aquatic life, birds, or other wildlife. Number 32, a temporary water alteration will not pose problems related to support structures. Number 33, a temporary wetland alteration will not be detrimental to aquifer recharge or the quantity or quality of groundwater. Number 34, the temporary water alteration will not disturb coastal dunes or contiguous back-dune areas. Number 35, a temporary wetland alteration will not, will, excuse me, will maintain or improve ecological or aesthetic values. Number 36, a temporary wetland alteration.
Will be.
See, hold on a second.
Will be.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Will be restored with an adequate buffer area between the wetland and adjacent land uses. Number 37, a temporary wetland alteration will be accomplished in conformance with the erosion prevention provisions of Environmental Quality Handbook, Erosion and Sediment Control, published by the Maine Soil and Water Conservation Commission dated March 1986, or subsequent revisions thereof. Number 38, a temporary wetland alteration will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities. Excuse me, okay, I'm going to bring that back. Temporary wetland alteration will not be accomplished without.
Will.
Yeah, will be. Yeah, will be accomplished. Into waste.
Yeah, will be.
Okay, will be accomplished without discharging wastewater from buildings or from other construction into wastewater treatment facilities in violation of section 15-1-4 of the sewage ordinance. We might need to revisit that one. And 39, the application substantially complies with section 19-7-9 Private Roads and Private Accessways and section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. So did I read that number 38 correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. So therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Jay Cox and Bill Royal doing business as Maxwell Cove LLC for a private road and private accessway permit, approval for Cadence Way to provide access for two lots located at 51 Ocean House Road and a new lot to be located at the rear of 51 Ocean House Road, as well as a resource protection permit for up to 500 square feet of temporary alteration to an RP2 wetland to provide a gravity sewer connection to Lot 2, be approved subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the plans be revised to address the town engineer's comments in the letter dated April 10, 2019. And number two, that there be no alteration of the site nor issuance of a building permit until the plans have been revised to address the above condition. The plan has been signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, and a performance guarantee has been posted.
All right. We have a second.
I actually have a question too.
Do you have a question?
What are you?
She's seconding the motion.
I second the motion. Now we can talk about it.
Oh, okay. I didn't know what the order was.
So we do, let's.
Sorry.
You have a question or comment?
It's probably a comment slash question.
Okay, go ahead.
The comment is 16, I suspect you may have picked up on this too. You said Cadence Way private accessway shall provide access to more than one dwelling unit, I believe.
Should be, shall, no more than one. Shall not.
Shall not provide, right?
So you need to ask, can you?
Are you willing to accept that amendment to? I, Andrea, thought about it, and I am. Okay.
And I am also okay with it, because I saw that, that was my same question.
And actually, then I have a further question from Maureen, and maybe this, so if it's pri, I should look back at this, and maybe you did, the private, there's a private road section that can handle two. Is that, what does that refer to as in this?
There, the, when you, it's basically a shared driveway. So the section from Ocean House Road, 75 feet in, is private road.
Right.
And then beyond that point, there's an additional 135 feet, and that's approved as a private accessway.
Right. So I was just wondering, so just the end part is the Cadence Way private accessway, and the first part is just Cadence Way?
Yeah, the name of it's going to be Cadence Way.
Okay.
It's just the type of approval that you're granting. It's a private road approval for the first part, and it's a private accessway for the back end.
Right, so the private accessway refers to the private accessway extension of Cadence Way. So I'm just trying to make sure the language makes sense in here, and I think it does, so.
Okay. That was my same comment.
Okay. Any further questions? Maureen.
Number 21, gutter drainage along Cadence Way shall be allowed to sheet across the face of the intersection or shall not be allowed.
I'm going to say it should be, shall not.
I think it shall not. I missed that one.
Because it would have to sheet uphill.
The motion maker needs to accept a friendly amendment, not for me, but for.
You're right. Does somebody have a friendly amendment? I don't think, you can't do it.
A friendly amendment to number 21 to change it to gutter drainage along Cadence Way shall not be allowed to sheet across.
Well, can the person who seconded my motion make that friendly amendment? Okay.
And I second that.
Okay.
I accept it. Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Bush.
Is that it?
Let me make sure I didn't mark any others. That's a pretty long.
It's a long list, huh?
Long, long thing.
Somebody did a very good job.
You're welcome. Good job, Jonathan.
We let Jonathan read them all.
Got like a 90.
No, we're good. I'm good.
Okay, everybody, set? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, the next item. Ocean House Common Village Green Development. David S. Jacobson is requesting site plan review and a resource protection permit for Ocean House Commons, a 7,144-square-foot mixed-use office, two-apartment unit building, and village green located at 326 Ocean House Road, and a resource protection permit to fill 3,500 square feet of RP2 wetland. The application will be reviewed for compliance with section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations, section 19-6-4 Town Center Zoning and Village Green Requirements, and section 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. We'll begin by having the applicant introduce himself and summarize any changes made since our last meeting.
Thank you. John Mitchell, Mitchell Associates, Dr. David Jacobson for Ocean House Common.
Could you aim that microphone more towards you? There we go.
What we'd like to, the format that we would like to do this evening would be, first, I'm going to just give a quick overview of the project, bring everybody up to date. Secondly, we want to present the plan revisions as of the last meeting that we met, the completeness meeting. Then have a discussion on the latest staff comments, followed by Steve Bradstreet, who's here this evening to talk about the DEP meeting that was held, and to talk about storm water management. And then finally, to have Matt from Mac Mueller Architects give a short presentation on architectural revisions. So, beginning with the quick overview of the project, this, of course, is an aerial photograph of the site with the town hall on the left and Cape Elizabeth Land Trust on the right, and vacant wooded land surrounding the back portion of the property. This is a copy of the boundary and topographical survey of the property with one-foot contours. You can see that the topography drains from Ocean House Road down towards the low point. Same thing is true from the town hall. Property flows down towards the low point. And then this portion of the property, the southerly portion of the property, there's about a nine-foot grade change in this direction flowing in this, down to the low point of the property. This is the town hall over here. This is the land trust. How do we move this up a bit? Do you know how to move it up, Steve? Maureen?
Type tools in the top corner.
Oh, that's good. Oh, it was enlarged. Okay. Yep, thank you. This is a graphic on the overall master plan. I believe that you've seen this at the last meeting. Ocean House Road here. We're coming in, the main access road comes in opposite Jordan Way and circles around and connects to the town hall parking lot. We are, in the master plan, there are four structures, all under 5,000 square feet. This is Dr. David Jacobson's building located here, which will be Phase One of the master plan. The Village Green is located here. It's a 20,000-square-foot parcel that will be deeded to the town. And this is the existing vegetated buffer. It's a 100-foot-wide buffer, which cannot be disturbed. Okay. Sorry. Okay. It's crazy. All right. This is a copy of the layout plan, or actually, the site plan for Phase One that shows the proposed building. There'll be, the dentist's practice will be on the first level, and there'll be two apartments on the second level. Access will come in. There'll be a 20, a total of 20 parking spaces to serve this building. And the Village Green will be constructed during the Phase One development. So I just wanted to, for the benefit of the planning board members, I wanted to just go down the list. I believe there are nine items that were changes to the plan since the last planning board meeting. Number one. the last planning board meeting. Number one, additional plantings have been put on the site plan for Phase One, both for aesthetic purposes and for screening purposes. We added one additional parking space. We had nineteen on the initial submission. We've added one, which will make it twenty. We've shifted, there's a section rate here that we had two or three parking spaces. We have removed those because they were in the area of the wetland impact. We removed existing vegetation, existing vegetation along the northerly propy line abutting the town hall. This was requested by town staff, so we removed that vegetation. Street tree, street tree plantings, the species have been changed to their American hawkbeam, which is located, which are located along Ocean House Road. And then we have black gum, which again is, is a medium-sized deciduous tree that sort of reinforces the pedestrian walkway of the village green. We have raised the grade approximately one and a half feet in this area here. We've sort of terraced it. We feathered the grade down, but raised the, the grade in this, in this open lawn area. We've increased the width of the sidewalk along Ocean House Road from five feet to six feet. The site distances have been added to the, to the layout plan. And finally, we've addressed all of the comments outlined in Steve Harding's letter regarding details. Those are the plan revisions. And next, I wanted to talk about the, addressing some of the recent comments that we've received.
Can I just clarify? Are you saying that the changes are not, these changes are in our packet or not reflected in the packet that was handed out?
They are in your packet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. The recent changes have not been included in your packet, but I wanted to...
The ones you're enumerating now?
Yes, correct. And I'm not sure how the board wants me to do this. I can go down one by one. There are several, or I can sort of summarize.
Summarize, I think.
Summarize. Okay. Well, all of the comments have been addressed. There were, there were a couple comments that were asked to be added to the plan. The footprint of the building has been labeled on the building. A letter requesting confirmation of sewer capacity has been sent to Steve Harding, and we're waiting for his response. All the plans have been stamped and sealed. There were a few comments regarding details, all of those site details, mostly utility questions or comments. All of those have been addressed. The temporary surface treatment of the areas, we're proposing to, as you can see, clear the vegetation for the future building sites. And Steve wanted us to label how that surface treatment is going to be treated during Phase One. And our response is that a reclamation grass seed mixture will be placed in those, in those areas. The traffic, a traffic comment, a note has been added to the, to this sheet, L2, indicating that additional studies will be conducted as future build-out scenarios proceed to ensure that the project will not, will not trigger MDOT traffic moving permit. There's a lot of comments that I'm going to allow Steve Bradstreet to comment on. A lot of comments pertaining to stormwater that I'm going to let Steve. But again, all of the labels and dimensions and notes and details have been, have been addressed, and the next set of plans will, will show all those. Okay, so I'm going to let Steve talk about DEP.
Thank you, John. Steve Bradstreet with Ransom Consulting. What I want to sort of highlight is that the, the area that... There's the grading plan. That was created for the stormwater management. And the initial stormwater management plan had detention for water quantity and some water quality measures in there with focal points and filtration swales to allow for water quality and water quantity control. The town asked, suggested that instead of detaining stormwater on-site, that we consider connecting directly across the street over to the town storm drain system at the intersection of Jordan Way. In doing so, knowing that this, build-out of this entire development would trigger DEP stormwater, because it will be over an acre of impervious area, we felt it was necessary that we have a meeting with DEP. So we had a meeting with DEP with Steve Harding and Maureen to discuss the permitting requirements for the site on future build-out that would trigger the one acre of impervious area. We came away from the meeting with the DEP indicating that if the town accepts the stormwater quantity into their storm drain system, that was acceptable to DEP. The water quality still had to be maintained on-site, so we had to still provide the stormwater measures on-site to clean up the stormwater prior to it discharging to the town storm drain system. So what that meant is we eliminated the detention, and we provided two or a number of stormwater runoff quantities to Steve Harding, indicating what flows the town could expect to see in that storm drain system. Then, Sabago Technics, Steve Harding, will be running the calculations, because in their nineteen ninety-five stormwater management study of this area, they had run all the quantities down to the outlet into the marsh. So they had all the calculations and everything. They will be inputting odd data to see if there's any bottlenecks downstream, to see if there's a small pipe, a too flat of a pipe, et cetera, that would potentially prevent us from outletting into that system. But right now, based on, and that calculation has been done, and it's been indicated that it may not be done until September sometime. But Phase One is just this, and we're looking to be able to tie Phase One, tie the whole system in, designed for future development, but for Phase One to be able to tie in to the town storm drain system. The flows are obviously a lot less than if we had the entire development built today. So that's what we're looking for. We'll still provide all the stormwater quality measurements. We'll address the town's concern of moving the filtration swales off of the town's property that was collecting water from the town's parking lot, still providing the quality protection there, but moving it off so that when the town plows the parking lot, the snow is deposited on the town's property. It melts, and it goes into the filtration swales. The town will also maintain those filtration, filtration swales with a maintenance agreement from the applicant. So that was a, the major change in the plans is the elimination of the detention, but we need to make sure that the town's storm drain system will be able to accept that. And based on what I had looked at, the sizing of the pipes and everything, it appeared that it would, at least on the upstream side of the storm drain system. But the Sabago Technics will be evaluating that and determining that for the larger events and for Phase Two. So what we're looking at is allowing it to contain, to continue to deposit into the town storm drain system at Jordan Way for Phase One. So that was the major stormwater difference in what we're projecting here with this plan, showing that it's plateaued down to the bottom, still showing the stormwater quality, and also shifting of the filtration swales onto the town's property. Those are the major issues. There were a number of individual, specific questions or comments that Mr. Harding made, and all of those are being taken care of. It's just a matter of looking at the stormwater downstream and evaluating that. If there's any questions on the stormwater, I'm happy to answer those.
Does anybody have a quick question?
Me?
Just a clarification at this point. We'll have questions after the hearing, the public hearing?
Yeah, I'll leave it for after.
John?
So there was a mention, I'm not sure if this is, with regards to the fill. When we were on the sidewalk, there was talk about sort of regrading everything at the level, but then I think Mr. Mitchell mentioned something about just grading it up a foot, a foot and a half. So would that still result in a dip from the village green down to that area?
It would be terraced, so it would be still dropping from what was proposed on the village green. It would be terraced down to another elevated or terraced area, yes.
Okay. What would be the difference between those two levels? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
No, no, I'm just trying to read it. Four to five feet, five...
Okay. All right.
So it'd be four to five feet higher in this scenario?
Four to five feet higher up towards Route seventy-seven, four to five feet lower as you get back into the property.
All right, we can get into the weeds after. Does anybody have any other?
Well, no, I ask that because of, I know that the discussion with regards to the stormwater had to do with the whole area being leveled and...
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, and do you have anything else? Oh, yes.
Good evening. Matt Prevensel from Mark Mueller Architects. Just wanted to briefly talk about the architectural changes and a couple of the notes and comments we received. I guess the, one of them that's applicable, we, we will add the building height to the elevations. It's roughly twenty-seven feet, given the average grade. As a gentleman here, I've talked about the grade kind of falls off in the back there. So it's roughly around twenty-seven feet. The, another comment, the exterior materials, you see, we had a, kind of this graphic presentation here. Horizontal siding with some shingle motif, kind of this, you know, two-material idea here. Material-wise, we're thinking a hardy, something, you know, durable, that'll hold up, good high-quality product. It wouldn't, you know, some of the products, you can have that wood grain to it, and they get a little kitschy. So we're not quite thinking that, but maybe a smooth finish. The other, the other one to talk about is the, the opening requirement, the equal ratio of wall to openings. So we've, you can see the elevation here. There's, there's good dimension. There's good scale and proportions. Right now, the, that requirement of the front elevation, we're at forty-five percent. Given the use, what's happening, that front, you know, gable, that's the lobby. It opens up. It's vaulted. There's some higher windows you can see kind of peeking around the corner. That opens to below. And then towards the, the side elevation there, there's offices, there are treatment rooms around, and we've, we've really loaded that up with windows as well. So it, given the, the layout of this, we have that opportunity to add more glazing around the corner. So we've felt that, given that situation and adding this more, that we've really kind of balanced this equal proportion of, of wall to, to openings. So again, we're, we're right around forty-five percent, but we've, we've provided forty-five percent at both the front and that side elevation there as you drive and approach the building. So that's where we've, that's where we're at right now. You know, trying to balance what's happening on the inside with, with the exterior there being a dental office and equipment and so on and so forth. I believe that's, I believe that's all architecturally. If anyone has any other comments or questions?
Any quick questions?
Yeah, any marketing questions? Did we last time, or is that in a different...
Let's see the hearing and then come back to that.
So that, that concludes our presentation, and we'd like to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is there anybody here from the public? Is anybody here to speak on this application? Okay, great. I will now open the public hearing. Please walk up to the lectern, state your name, your dress, and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. My name's Nate Tuveger. I'm here on behalf of Field Winds LLC. I'm the owner of three thirty-six Ocean House Road. I'm the owner of the property benefited by the buffer zone easement. And Field Winds has a question about the effect of the proposed development on the buffer zone. Field Winds would like to know whether the proposals for three twenty-six Ocean House Road will affect the easement zone and the vegetation in and around the zone. In addition, it would be helpful to understand the steps in place to ensure there's no environmental contamination from the dental practice, such as mercury, in order to protect the soil and water in the area.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Suzanne McGann, eleven eighty Shore Road. I was just, I was reading through the information. I just wanted a little clarification. The minutes from the last monthly meeting, planning board meeting stated that the vernal pool that's on the property has been evaluated and considered a non-significant wetland. I was just wondering who had made this determination, and where is that documentation? I can't find it online. I was also curious about the, the drainage as well. I know that they addressed some of the questions that were brought up at last meeting. But I was wondering if this area that's in front of the building, if it's being, is it continued to be sloped down towards, so will the water be flowing into the land trust property, or will it be captured and, as stormwater? Also, in the notes from last time, it said there was a fifteen-wide strip buffer on the south side, which it looked like from one of the previous pictures. But then when I also read the minutes, it stated that the entire area will be cleared of trees. So there seemed to be a little inconsistency. I was just wondering if you could address that as well. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Zeb Meyerwitz, resident at Twelve Hill Way. I'm here just to lend my support for the development. I think it's, there's been a lot of thought that's been put in... I think it's, there's been a lot of thought that's been put into it. It's very methodical in its procedure, and I think it's trying to be as conscious as it can to the adjacent lots. As somebody who went through this a couple of years ago, it's not very easy to get a development in the town of Cape Elizabeth that can satisfy all parties. I think the best that we can do is try to move forward in a biblical fashion. And, you know, I do support making sure that we address the environmental concerns that have been previously mentioned. But I think this is a giant leap of faith on behalf of Dr. Jacobson, and he's putting his neck out here to attempt to develop not just his own individual practice, but to move forward with the goals that the Town Center Committee had put forward with a town Village Green, which I think is being established here. And I think we need to keep that, you know, we need to be very conscious of the fact that we have a local resident and business owner who has a thriving practice that's centric to Cape Elizabeth, serving the members of Cape Elizabeth. And we need to be conscious in helping to nurture and grow that. Living here for almost a decade at this point, we have various issues of a lack of support from businesses in terms of income. Every time that we have a budget crisis, it always gets passed to local property owners. Further development within the established Town Center zoning helps to ameliorate that. Additionally, I believe, and Maureen may be able to correct me, but I believe that this is also within the TIF district. Is that correct, Maureen? So, you know, this development really does a good potential in gathering funds that will have state support in redeveloping the infrastructure. And so, you know, we all like to, we're all a little reluctant to change, but I think this is really tastefully done. Thank you.
I didn't catch your name.
Zeb Myrowitz.
Thank you.
Resident of 12 Hill Way.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I'm closing the public hearing. Let's try and take care of these questions from the public. So I guess the first one is regarding the environmental quality and possible mercury contamination, other chemicals from the dentist's office.
The state has strict guidelines for medical offices and certainly dental where we use, if we're, there are mountain separators, there are many systems in place to filter waste that comes from my evacuation lines. It'll get separated, filtered out, separated from any wastewater. So I'll comply or go above and beyond what the state mandates for in terms of those kinds of protections. So pretty standard.
Maureen wants to interject?
So just to be clear, there are no wastewater lines leaving your property that aren't going to be connected to the public sewer?
Correct.
And if you were inadvertently discharging anything, you would be in violation of the sewer ordinance, because if it would be going into the sewer line, it wouldn't be discharged out the back? Correct. Okay.
Okay. The next question was regarding the vernal pool evaluation and whether or not that can be found online or some location.
Lauren Stockwell of Stockwell Environmental Consulting did the evaluation delineation of the wetlands in April 21st of 2016. It was determined that it was not a vernal pool. And it can be found in Exhibit Four of our application, her report.
Okay. Maureen?
I just want to make clear that the town does not post online the applicant submissions. It's an enormous amount of information. We don't have the ability to store it. So what we post online are the agendas, the minutes, and the reports generated by town staff. So anything that's been submitted by the applicant is available for review in the town office, and the report that Mr. Mitchell has referenced is right in here. So anyone could come and take a look at it. You should probably also, I'm going to look at Mr. Bradstreet, that was also noted at the meeting we had with the EP, and they also confirmed that what was there was not a significant vernal pool, and the state only regulates significant vernal pools. So it did not have the minimum number of egg masses needed under state law to qualify for protection under state laws of vernal pool.
There was also a question, Suzanne also asked the question about clearing, say clearing. Any area outside of the building envelope will not be cleared. The vegetation along the northerly, I'm sorry, southerly property line, there's a 15-foot setback abutting the land trust property, that vegetation will be preserved.
She also asked whether water was flowing into the land trust from the site?
No. I mean, all of the water is going to be captured, and, I mean, there may be, there may be some runoff from that 15-foot undisturbed portion of the property that flows onto the land trust property now, that may continue. But the 95% of the flow will drain into the low area, be directed to the focal points, and then discharged into Ocean House Road.
And then there was also, she had a question about the 15-foot wide strip buffer, I think between?
He just covered that. That's the...
No, on this side?
John, can you bring up the pictures? Was this something inside?
No, I'm talking about, okay, I was talking about the north side.
Yeah, the north side's going to be cleared at our request.
Yeah. Okay.
And graded into the bathroom.
The north side will be cleared.
That was at our...
All the way to the property.
That was at our request.
Yes.
Okay. Good. All right.
I think there was another question. There was the first...
About the easement, something?
Yeah, the vegetation in the easement zone, how that would be preserved. Actually, I'm not exactly sure what the question was, but I think in that easement zone on the, whatever side minutes?
Yeah, that is a function of the, that is a restriction on the property right now. So we don't have any authority to even change it.
It's staying as it is now.
It's staying exactly the way it is. We just need to make sure that we don't grant an approval that allows them to do something that they're not allowed to do, and they're staying out of it.
So it would be problematic if they did anything in that zone. I think they want to be assured that there will be no cutting of any trees or anything.
There won't be any cutting. The easement does allow the owner to manage deadwood within that easement. Dead trees.
All right. So I'm going to open up the board to questions. Does anybody want to start? Andrew?
I have a list, but the first one that I think I was going to ask initially was, and maybe I lost this, you talked about water quantity going into this stormwater and how it would kind of be phased, but I sort of lost the quality aspect, how that was going to be treated.
Yes, the stormwater quality. What we've done is everything that is in Phase One along the road to the ridge line of the building and over this location all flows across into here. And this swale along here goes to a focal point, which is a water treatment system, and to this focal point, which is another water quality treatment system. Anything coming off the parking lot flows to a filtration swale here and a filtration swale there. The water from those infiltrate, go through the bio media filter, is cleaned up, and it goes into an underdrain system. That underdrain system then connects back to the storm drain system here, across to here, and then over to the storm drain manhole in Jordan Way. So even though it goes through the water quality system, it doesn't disappear. We have to collect it, and collects into an underdrain system that eventually outlets over here after it's cleaned.
Great. I have a bunch more questions. I don't know if you want me to continue or skip around.
Keep going.
Dumpster screening, right now, I mean, I think I saw there was a comment about, you know, it's going to be chain length, changed to wood, but I don't know, it kind of might be nice to have some sort of vegetative screening of that. Even the stockade, I mean, we had it around our dumpster at work, and it basically just fell apart, and there was nothing else kind of dressing it up. That's, you don't even need to answer that, but...
It's wood. We've changed it to...
But I mean, is there any, any plan for any plantings, I mean, to kind of screen off in addition that kind of, they're just not very attractive, even with the just stockade fencing around the dumpster?
Well, we have to allow access for the truck, which is right here.
I guess eventually there'll be a building there, so you won't see it, is that potentially?
There will be a building, there will be a...
Yeah, I was thinking more on the roadside.
Building located here.
Yeah.
I think we, let me just check. So, I mean, we don't have any plantings here, but that, you know, it will be completely encased or surrounded. The dumpsters will be surrounded with a, I think it's a six-foot-high stockade fence with a double gate.
Yeah, the only reason why I ask is because it's, you know, that's the, that's the one section that faces the road, so it, I mean, I just, it just might not be super attractive, but I'll kind of leave it up to you and the owner, who's going to have to look at it. My next question was, oh, so in the full build-out plan, you had a sidewalk that ran internal all the way down, but right now you can see you've just got that section in front, which, you know, I mean, I guess I get it that it makes sense to do it, you know, in the phases, but probably just from the perspective of it's going to get kind of destroyed when you try and build that one closer to the street. But from a pedestrian access point of view, it seems like, for me, I'd want to see the full sidewalk from the sidewalk on the street all the way up, at least to the dental practice. So if folks are parking in town, they could walk all the way in rather than walking on the road, since you're going to do it anyway. I don't know, maybe it doesn't need to be fully concrete or whatever you're planning initially, because it might get kind of beat up in subsequent phases. But for me, it'd be nice to see some connection other than walking on the road to the existing sidewalk along the road.
Yeah. I know what you're saying, and, you know, I think you hit on it, that sidewalk would be completely destroyed in the construction of this property here. You know, if the board agrees, that perhaps we could do a stone-dust pathway that leads out to the street.
Might be at least a good intermediate step. I don't know if anyone else cares about this issue or not, but...
Yeah, it's a good point.
I just feel like it's, you know, try and promote people to walk places, and if you have a sidewalk to nowhere, it's not really promoting anything, except for walking up from, you know, along the parking lot. So I know it's hard, you know, with this phase design, but, you know, it is also in the plans eventually, so, I mean, I would be happy with at least just stone dust, and then at least it's not a huge problem if it, you know, there's no destroying it, it's just stone dust. But I don't know what others feel about that idea.
I can agree with that.
Or if anyone even else feels like it's a necessary...
We can poll on it. Why don't you go ahead with your, the rest of your questions?
Lighting at the flagpole area, were you, was there any plan to have lighting or at least conduit that lighting could be put in, not only even at the flagpole, but I don't know if the town...
He doesn't conduct to the flagpole.
I don't know what the towns are thought about lighting along that semi-circular...
Can you point out where the flagpole is?
Right there.
Joe, can I just ask a question on that? And this is to Maureen, based upon that question. My understanding is that Dr. Jacobson is essentially, he's buying this plot of land, and then he is donating the Village Green over to the town, basically giving this as a gift to the town. Obviously, they've made a design for that, but once it's, from my, what I remember when we put this Village Green ordinance in, is that once it's deeded over the town, it's the town's ability, or it's up to the town to maintain it. Is that correct? And that would include any sort of maintenance or any sort of lighting or anything like that?
You know, different arrangements have been discussed, but what you're talking about is what I think is the likeliest scenario, that the expectation is that the applicant will actually build a green, not just give us the parcel. And so there are some standards in the Town Center zoning that talk about it has to have walkways, it has to have a focal point. And the question for the board, and I think that's one of the reasons that the staff recommendation tonight was, that one, you're finished with your discussion, that this be tabled to next month rather than you consider a motion for approval, is to just, what is the right balance? Because the applicant is taking on a lot of the, a lot of the base structure. He's putting the bones in, he's clearing it, he's adding fill, he's leveling it out, he is putting in some walkways, he is creating a focal point. Is he doing enough? It's, I, my great expectation that this site will grow in affection by the town over the years and will be improved, and things like what you're talking about could actually That's what the board may want to talk about, is how much of a burden this applicant should carry, and how much do you want to structure into a clear direction for the full build-out? So that if there are some expectations, for example, I've suggested that, you know, I think there should be a sidewalk along the entire length of this road, and maybe there should be one on both sides of the road. And if there's a clear expectation that that should be happening, perhaps there should be some notes in this plan so that the future pad buyers know what they're getting into, and you don't have to re-argue or redesign this at every step. So I think that would be a beneficial discussion by the board with the applicant tonight to kind of narrow in generally where you are, because staff has made some recommendations, but most of this stuff has happened since the last submission. So it really, really would behoove the planning board to talk about how far do they have to go with this, understanding that they're already doing a heavy lift by putting in the initial grading.
I think I would add that I don't, I agree with that, I think a balance makes sense, but in terms of like lighting it, I know things like putting in conduit is far easier initially, and maybe it's just thinking about things like setting up the structure that one could have lights by just tying into the conduit now and letting the town decide what they want for lighting in the future, but at least having that in the plan and executing it when this is put in so that it's not destroying, you know, it just makes everything a lot easier in the future and gives them future capacity. That was my comment, but we can talk about that. And I don't know what your plan, Maureen, was for actually discussing more of these kinds of issues.
I've got some, when you're done, I've got some.
Okay.
I think we'll let everyone throw everything out and then come circle back.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, Jim?
Two more, two or three more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. L11, that must be Plan 11. I just have a note that text is cut off. I think it was like a text box that got cut off by another text box, so there's not like full text on it. I don't know if that was cleaned up on one of these sheets, I'd have to go back and work with it. Where the pre-cast concrete catch makes us?
Oh, yeah. Your window for the text didn't cover all the text, is what it is. On Detail 3L9, the... pre-cast concrete catch basin.
Detail 3?
On the left side, kinda halfway up. Catch reinforced and pre, you can see, it's just, the window on CAD wasn't quite big enough.
Yeah, we'll correct it.
Yeah.
I just noticed that.
That's a standard detail.
Yes.
Yeah.
D2?
D2?
D2. I have a comment, you have Post Development Plan, Village Green, shown as impervious, there's like some section, I think it's this, you have them like color-coded, and you have actually the semicircle as impervious, but you actually, I think, have it listed as semi-pervious pavers or something, so, I mean, I think technically it's not impervious, right? Is that true? Maybe that, maybe it's changed, I'm not sure.
Technically, that's correct, I mean, the area up above, I looked at as being impervious, though it is a porous pavers with an underdrain system in there, so, yes, it's pervious, at least for the one-inch storm, it's pervious, beyond that, it is not. That's all I have.
Thanks. Okay, Jim?
Yeah.
Would you like to...
I just, being selfish from the parade point of view, on L5, it gets into the, like you said, how much work do you do, how much work does the town do, you've got the conduit running to the flagpole, are you pulling wire and providing a receptacle, or just putting in conduit?
No, I've anticipated putting a receptacle.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, it's what I wanna say, it doesn't say, you know, you don't have a full electrical plan, I understand, but...
Right, right.
I just wanted to just be clear who's doing that, if the town has to do it. And then, again, from the parade point of view, I anticipate that the existing memorial that's in front of the elementary school right now, which is like a big gravestone, will be relocated over there, so, where to put it, and my first thought was, and we don't have to make a decision now, but I wanna give people time to think about it, that middle bench, either, right now, pour a pad, and it's approximately a three-feet-by-eight-feet pad, something like that, to put the memorial on, just to have it there, because it's gonna be simpler to do it now than to have to go back after you've done everything and tear it up to put it in, and you can actually set that bench on top of the pad for now, or just not have that middle bench, because it's, it's a good place to put the memorial, instead of sticking it off to the side somewhere.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Regarding that, who makes the decision on whether that memorial gets moved or not?
Well, it'll essentially be me, because I think that Sturgis is gonna say, "What do you wanna do, Jim?"
So... Planning Board Member Pughner has characterized that exactly.
Okay.
So...
I didn't know if it was more complicated than that.
I will have a say in it.
So, we're not saying that you would be making that decision and showing the memorial on the plan, but maybe you would have a pad there that would be the right size and not put a bench there? Does that sound above right?
Yeah, right, right. The memorial won't be much bigger than the bench, really, it's just the pad will be a little bit wider, and, and I guess I wanna echo Andrew's comments about lighting, because right now, there isn't any, and we need to decide who's gonna put it in, because people will want to be there at night, and if it's completely dark, you know, not that Cape Elizabeth is a high crime area, but people would feel more comfortable, it's just some sense of lighting at night.
Can you be, are you saying along the path, or along the perimeter?
Probably more where the flagpole area is, is my sense, plus also, you, I'm not completely familiar with the, with flag regulations, but if you have a light shining on it, you never have to go raise a flag up and down every day, which, if you don't have lighting there, then somebody from the town's gotta do that, one more chore, I guess, as it is. So, again, I wanna get that out there, we don't have to decide right now.
Anything else?
That's it.
Do you have anything?
I just, I just wanna say that I think, I think the applicant is putting forward a whole lot on this Village Green, and I think the town needs to start thinking about where it's gonna take over, because putting this in what the infrastructure they're talking about now, that's, that's a lot of work, and that's a lot of, a lot of dollars, and I don't think the town should expect a whole lot more without figuring out how they're gonna pony up.
I would concur with Carolyn.
Okay, Jonathan?
The only questions I had are, well, the question, the area for the quality control of the water, and I assume in there's the two dark rectangle and square on the plan, can you just briefly describe what that's gonna look like, or is it something that's even gonna be visible?
Okay, what those are is, there's the stormwater sheets across the pavement, and into interceptor sort of swales, very shallow swales, they're all movable, and it goes into, it's a product name called a focal point, first goes into a rain garden turret, and what it does is it just collects the water, and then it distributes it out into a stilling basin, like a stone basin, but then into a rain garden, so it's very similar to a rain garden, but then below that, it has a biomedial filter to clean that water up, and then allow it to go into an underdrain system. The, the product focal point is very conducive to large areas, one acre of impervious area can be cleaned up in 174 square feet of this material, and so that's very, very efficient in doing that, and it's an accepted water quality measurement by DEP.
Okay.
So, it looks like a rain garden, with a basin at an end of that.
Okay, did you describe, did you provide any sketches or anything in the plan?
I believe in the details, there's a focal point detail.
Is it L12?
It's L12.
All right, I'll have to take a look at that, but, in the meantime, one of the things that I just wanted to say is, I commend Dr. Jacobson and the application process for taking this on, because I know it's not, it's a lot of heavy lifting on his part, which will essentially be a donation to the town, so, I appreciate that, and I think that this Village Green would really be a treasure for the town to have, it's something that we've discussed for the time that I've been on the board, so I really, I think, under the right circumstances, it'd be nice to see this happen, obviously, we wanna do it correctly, though, and the only thing I wanted to say is that I know that last time, during the site walk, when we discussed the elevation-wise, I can understand why, yeah, in a perfect world, it would be level all the way across to the other side, but, that's a lot of dollars for somebody to have to take on, to get, I think, what is about five or six feet of fill, and I can understand why that the applicant might not be in a financial situation to do that, but I like the idea of the terrace and the one-foot increase, I think that's really showing a lot, and going forward on that, so, I don't think that that would be anything that would stop me from supporting this, but I just, I can understand why, like I said, it's not to the standard of the five feet of fill.
Just a question, a couple of questions about the trees on L3, the height of the trees, let's see, the ones along the street, I guess?
I can't hear you, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry, the trees along the street, just the height, do you have a sense of that?
Oh, those are pretty few.
Okay, okay. Also, following up on Jonathan's discussion about, and thank you so much for the discussion about the focal point, so, in a, in a major storm, do you foresee standing water in the rain garden, or what's your sense of that?
The focal point areas are a depressed area, but it's only depressed by six inches. It has to be planted with water-tolerant plants, vegetation, so what it does is it collects their size, so it collects the first inch of rainfall off of the site, off the impervious area, into that, allows the pond six inches, and then it starts to go down through the filtration media. Anything in excess of one-inch storm overflows and will go into a catch basin that was, actually, it's probably that black dot there, I believe, is a catch basin that collects the stormwater that overflows from that, or from that lower terraced area, the water has to get out and over to Jordan Way somehow, and so, both that focal point and this focal point connect over to this storm drain manhole, and allows their underdrain to connect there, and also, anything that overflows will go to that catch basin and go across the street.
Great, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi.
Go ahead.
I just had a follow-up, actually, question to, about the focal point filters.
Lines different, so go ahead.
Do they have to be square and/or rectangular? Only reason why I ask is because, I don't know, it's kind of, it seemed like if it was maybe something not square or rectangular, it might look more natural, I guess.
Those are pure engineering designs.
Yeah.
I deal with straight lines, John doesn't, so, no, they, you are correct, they are, they're form-fitting, they can, as a garden is, you can create them any shape, they just have to take on a designed footprint area.
Certain size.
So, if this one is 100 square feet, and that's 74 square feet, yes, they are, they can be shaped so they don't look like that, you're correct.
Okay, I just, yeah, it would look more attractive, I think, if it had a more natural look, so...
Yes, yeah, they, they won't look like that.
Yeah.
Okay, Carol Ann?
This has to do with the phasing and the stormwater management that you're working with DEP and the town's system, and I realize that the full study of the town's system isn't going to happen until, be done until September, but what is the impact if, if you, if it's found that a fully phased project with all four buildings cannot be handled by the town's stormwater system?
We haven't even thought of that. What we're, what we're anticipating, and we feel comfortable about that, is that when the study was done in 1995, and then the storm drain system that was upgraded a decade ago, I'm not quite sure of the date, on Route 77, those pipes were installed for future build-out, and I cannot imagine that they were put in without a good feeling that downstream, it was acceptable, and would accept that additional flow, because those storm drains that are installed out here and in Jordan Way are designed for full build-out, anticipated build-out of the town center, and in doing so, I would imagine that it was evaluated all the way to the marsh, and that it was acceptable, but it's just a matter of surveying techniques, taking the flows and running it. If there is anything, we've already discussed that with Bob Malley, it may be a pipe size that has to be increased, you can't really increase slopes because they're stuck, but pipe sizes may increase in a location, but we really don't know that. Right now, the flows that are coming off-site, a 25-year storm, 6.3 inches in 24 hours is significant, and we have approximately five CFS additional coming off-site, the 24-inch pipe has approximately 12 CFS in it on a normal storm, a 25-year storm. We feel there's a capacity there, but that won't be determined until that evaluation is done.
So, what's...
So, would you, would you go ahead and build it this way?
Yes.
And then if you had to change it?
What we would be changing is nothing onsite, or nothing coming off the site into the storm drain system, it's a matter of the town's storm drain system.
Maureen?
This is what we need a little more time on, so, so, all the applicant is seeking now is approval for Phase 1, and there's nothing that they're doing for Phase 1 that shuts them off from options for full build-out. So, I mean, while staff has been extremely discouraging of onsite detention, the area that they could use for onsite detention is going to stay in ownership of the, for the property owner for now, and we're hoping to have the answer on capacity by mid-September. I have high doubts that any other building will be, get, will get approved here before mid-September, so I think we've got time, and then, you know, we are, we are still very committed to the town center stormwater plans, which say that you put your stormwater into the town's stormwater system, and, you know, there might be a pipe from where this project connects to the outlet that is a little undersized, and the town has not closed the door to making infrastructure improvements itself, to its stormwater system. The entire point from where this development connects in to the outlet is all on town property, so we have, with total control over it, and that's a good situation to be in, so we can make adjustments to that system, we just don't know with, with a significant amount of confidence. So, that's where we are right now, pushing the applicant to connect to the town system as their design, I understand, is the applicant is very desirous of having the building constructed by December, so that's the other thing we're trying to, to plan, is to make sure this question that we're trying to answer does not significantly alter the applicant's construction schedule.
So, as designed, okay to put into stormwater for Phase 1, that's been approved by the town?
The town has said that it will accept the stormwater from this project, and we're saying that without having 100% confidence that the system we have now is large enough, but we have high-level confidence that if we find problems, we can take care of it. How's that? And the bigger question is build-out.
It's Phase 1, the capacity is there, there's no question.
We're all, we're like 99% sure, and, you know, I don't wanna freak out the town engineer and the public works director too much, but we're fairly sure we're okay with Phase 1, and Phase, and the full build-out will not be happening before September 15.
So, is there protection for the applicant in some way, that the town basically will sign off and say, even though we're only, you know, there's a 1% chance that it might not be okay, but the town's gonna deal with it, is that...
Yes, and that's why we need this little extra time, that, you know, the submission deadline is a week from this Friday, so we have almost two weeks to sort out these last details before the applicant has to submit their final application, and, you know, we're expecting that application to include commitments from the town.
All right, anything else? I have a couple of questions, oh, I'm sorry, do you wanna, so, when would the Village Green be conveyed to the town, would that be as part of Phase 1? Do we know that?
And again, I would say this is some of those details that we need to, I would think that we would want, I mean, if it was up to me, I think the Village Green should be constructed and then conveyed to the town pretty close to when the certificate of occupancy is issued for the building.
Okay.
And I think these are, I mean, I'm hesitating a little, because trying to get into a building, and by the end of December, you run into weather, and I think there are ways for us to work out those details, but I think they do need to be worked out.
Okay, so I have a comment, in that I'm pretty satisfied with the level of the infrastructure you're providing on the Village Green, the... providing on the Village Green, the path, it seems like there's a lot of planting. Can you go back to the full build-out slide here? So, these, the trees around the top and the side, those are intentional, those aren't just?
These trees?
All the trees and around the, the parking area.
Yes, those are intentional.
Okay, so, I mean, one thing I would like to see, I would love to see a stone dust path, both as we discussed earlier, and also around the interior of the parking area, but I'm not sure that that's something I would expect you to provide or the town.
What we have discussed is, once these two buildings are constructed to provide pedestrian circulation from roughly this area to the Village Green.
Great, and?
Yeah.
All right, then my other comment is, I think your flagpole's in the wrong place.
You want to mine?
When I look at this, I, where you have the Jim, where you have the flagpole is right where I see Jim doing his Flanders Field poem, and in back of him are singers and?
Good point.
Other people, and so, I think the flagpole should actually be the backdrop to that, or?
Right.
In the back of that, or maybe in the front, one or the other.
With the middle bench is?
So, the pad is where the flagpole is, and the flagpole is where the middle bench is?
Yeah, the flagpole could be in back of the middle bench.
Yep.
Or, or it could be brought all the way forward to the front.
I'll take a look at that.
John, right in back of the monument.
Right, good point there, Joe.
All right. Any other questions?
Edson?
John?
For, I know this is getting beyond Phase One, but was there any thought that during Phase One, you would build at least some parking outside of the building for Phase One, so that people could use it to access the Village Green? I know, as was pointed out with Andrew's comment, that a lot of parking would probably be destroyed, or at least the pathway would be damaged with building, but I'm just seeing the, I think it's eight spots on the Village Green side when you enter, whether or not that was ever thought of, of putting that in during Phase One, so there could be parking for the Village Green besides using Town Hall. Just a thought.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm trying to decide whether I agree with that or not, but.
There were a couple of items I brought up. Is it all right if I just kind of roll through this real quick?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I interject real quick? Does anybody else want to comment on the, Maureen's question about the level of infrastructure being provided? I mean, there was talk about adding lighting, you know, and other things.
You mean, how much is the town going to do?
Yeah, well, how much can we expect the applicant to provide? And, I mean, I kind of feel like the grading and the path and the, what's shown so far is probably as much as really can be expected. I don't know if you guys?
I'm sure there are those in the town who want them to do everything, but that's not practical. Yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, I guess fair, but what is fair? But I guess, I can see what you're, what you're saying, I could, I could live with that.
I agree with you, John.
No, I, like I said, I think the applicant has done quite a service if this goes through, so.
All right.
Okay, so, and I think some of these you've already answered, so I just want to double-check. So, I am hearing that the board is interested in seeing more sidewalks, perhaps being better delineated as part of future phases.
You think stone dust, is that what you're?
No, I'm saying, making more of a commitment about what the additional sidewalks would be when the additional buildings come in.
Yeah.
Okay, not, not committing this, this particular applicant. All right.
I mean, to be clear, I would love to see at least stone dust, at least for that section, connecting the first building to the street, but that would be my personal preference. In addition to what you said, that yes, more, it laid out for the future phases.
Andrew, can you talk into the microphone?
Oh, sorry, I just, to be clear, for me, I, I would like to see at least stone dust connecting to the pathway that's on, I mean, this is deceiving, but the one in front of the building that's going to be built out. But I also agree with the general comment to have more, sort of pathways laid out on the plan for the total build-out.
On the southern border, John, there's a narrow 15-foot strip, and you're proposing to keep existing vegetation. It would be nice to know if there is any in that 15-foot strip area.
If there are.
If there is any vegetation that is, that will be there when you're done with the clearing.
Yeah.
And if there isn't, then we might need some buffering. You understand what I mean?
Yes, I do.
Okay, great. And then, there is the lighting plan. We always have this kind of issue where you're not supposed to exceed .5-foot candles at the property line, and at the front property line, there are many locations where the .5-foot candles are exceeded, but that's because the applicant is installing the pedestrian town center light fixtures, so it's not real, it's on, it's on the town right-of-way, not on the applicant's property, and the .5 doesn't really apply in that instance. But there is some, some light that's going on near your driveway that is on your property, and you can tell by the foot candle radii that?
We've adjusted that fixture.
You've adjusted it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then, you said you had a generator, or there should, there should be something submitted that talks about the decibel level at the property line, and you might be able to pull something off the Internet that estimates, you know, how quiet a dentist's office is.
What we said in our, the submission that we're going to be making, is that once mechanical equipment has been determined, that we will provide that information.
Is the board satisfied with that?
Well, hold on, I mean, so, so, when is that going to be determined? Sorry, I'm just sort of thinking. So, when, so that's prior to, not prior to us signing off on it, though, right?
No, you would, I mean, what you would probably have to do is put a condition on the approval that the mechanical equipment will not exceed .5-foot candles at the property line, and the applicant would have to submit information after the mechanical equipment is installed, and if it's more than .5-foot candles, they're in violation of their approval.
You mean?
You mean decimals?
Yeah.
Decimals.
Decimals, yeah. It's a kind of a backwards way to get into it.
That, that's fine, I just know, we actually took over a dentist's office, and I know there's like some pretty hefty vacuum equipment that, that, I mean, it's pretty buried in the building, and I don't think you would have heard it, but it just, I wanted to just make sure, yeah, that's clear that that is in the?
I guess, based on experience, I don't have a high level of confidence that generator will be quiet enough at the property line, but that's just based on running a bunch of generators.
Yeah, just trying to make sure there's an adequate information in the, in the record for you to make that finding.
This is an emergency generator, right? Just like everybody's emergency generator, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
But there presumably would be vacuum pumps, too, for the, for the dental office?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's inside, inside. They're down in, they're down in the basement, right? The vacuum pumps, yeah. So, you won't hear those.
So, then we get to the town center design standards, and the standards do say that the first floor front facade has to have an equal proportion of openings to solid wall space, and that first floor front facade does not. And, you know, it's, it's a standard.
What was the percentage? I don't remember.
I wasn't sure, because I believe the applicant was using, were using the side as well as the front?
Yeah, so, both the, the way it is currently, both the front and the side each have 45%.
Are you talking about the first floor or the entire?
First floor only.
The first floor only?
Yeah.
Can you bring back the slide?
It's just, I don't, I don't know if the board has any ability to weigh that.
What are you counting?
So, we're talking these windows?
How are you counting? Are you counting to the outside of trim?
Yeah, so, we're counting if we, to get a little technical here, so we're, so at this elevation here, we're talking, we're talking from this gray line up to this, this soffit line here, so this is all lobby here, and, and again, that's, it does say that the first floor, so, you know, these are here, but they're not technically counted because they're, I mean, they're?
Why not?
Well, we can get really technical, but it's, you know?
Are they letting light into the space, or are they?
They, they are, this is a vaulted lobby area.
So, you should count them.
So, so we can count that if the board's in agreement, it's above the second, you know, it's above the lip of the second floor. There's these windows here that are not included, but do provide light into the lobby as well. This is part of the entrance, and then kind of get into, you know, real office space, there's a restroom here, there's a restroom here, there's some offices here, and then when we get to the, the side here, so this is all lobby.
So, wait, are you doing the side because it's facing?
Because from approach, yeah, from, from the approach road, you actually, you see a lot of this elevation here, so it's, I know, I know it's not really 100% part of the, part of the ordinance and how it's designed.
So, Matt, we don't need to count that, so let's go back to the front.
We're just, you know, the architecture has four sides, we're just, we're looking at this as a, as a big picture, you know, like, if you seize market here, if you just go down the street.
So, wait, are you, are you counting as window the, out to out of the casings? I mean, going from 45 to 50% is not a lot to pick up.
It's not a lot, no, so we're kind of in the frame of the window, we're not counting, we're not counting casing or?
So, count the casings.
Or anything like that.
It's not glazing, it's casing.
If you pick up those three windows, do you want some blocking?
Yeah, over the grand scheme.
The only reason I say that, visually, that looks like plenty of windows to me. I, I wouldn't like?
I agree.
I, I just, I don't see how you'd calculate it and start making every window a little wider for what purpose, I don't, I mean?
To meet the standard of the ordinance.
Well, I don't know, maybe I'm in the minority on that.
I, I didn't hear what you just said.
I said, I, Maureen makes a good point, that that's the standard, so.
Yeah. Because it's in the ordinance, we can't weigh that.
It says, "The first floor front facade shall be, shall be constructed with an equal proportion of openings to wall space."
And you can't, you can't have more, if you wanted more glass, it says you can't have more glass?
You can have more.
Yeah, he has 5% less.
So?
I'd say go recalculate it with those three windows up above.
Or I'd say add a couple more windows. Because if we, because if we can't get, if the standard is 50%, it's got to be 50%. To play, I'm not double-checking, how do you, I mean, does it say in the standard exactly how one's supposed to calculate this?
"The first floor front facade shall be constructed with an equal proportion of openings to wall space."
So, my trouble with this is, and I actually agree, it seems like plenty, so from a design perspective, I don't have a problem with this. I get where Maureen's coming from, we have to treat everybody equally and apply the ordinance as it is. How, how can you cut, can you include the, see, you didn't include the three upper windows, and I, I get that, because you're saying, then you're not, then also calculating probably the area of the peak of that, of that lofted space, that's lofted then?
Correct.
Right? So, how could you add those three windows and then not also include the area above that in that lofted space as being first floor? So, I, I don't, to, to me, somebody could come back and say, well, that's kind of BS, to include three windows and not include the area above it as first floor. So, that's why I'm questioning, how is it calculated? Because that does matter.
The Hillway project was much, much larger than this, and they calculated it and gave us the number and proved that they had met the standard.
Okay.
Okay.
And then also, does the board want to get a sample of exterior materials?
Yeah, aren't we supposed to?
You bet.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We can discuss color, can't we?
A little bit.
Tonight?
No, let's not discuss it tonight. Okay, so, Matt, you'll bring samples?
I'll bring samples.
Of both colors?
Sure.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Jim?
Got a motion for the board to consider?
Awesome.
Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of David S. Jacobson for site plan review and a resource protection permit for Ocean House Commons, a 7144 square-foot mixed-use office slash two-apartment unit building, and Village Green located at 326 Ocean House Road, and a resource protection permit to fill 3,500 square feet of RP2 wetland be tabled to the regular May 21st, 2019, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you.
I think that's mine, yeah.
Yeah, I just made sure I grabbed it.
Wait, no, actually, this one is mine, I believe, so, that's the?
Everybody ready?
Yep.
Dan, John, Jim? You ready? Okay.
You good, Kevin?
I'm just trying to find it on the?
Oh, is it no name?
Is that no name? Yeah, maybe that's it. Yep.
Okay, let me introduce it then, all right. Okay, 1226 Shore Road Mixed Office slash Restaurant slash Eight Apartments Development. Patrick Tinsman is requesting approval of a mixed office slash restaurant slash Eight Apartments Development located at 1226 Shore Road. The planning board granted site plan approval with conditions on October 20th, 2017. Necessary plan revisions to comply with the conditions resulted in a need for amendments to the site plan approval. The approval expired before the applicant returned for amendments, so reapproval of the development is proposed, subject to compliance with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations and Section 1964 D3 Town Center Design Requirements. And before I invite you guys up to speak, Maureen is going to make a brief statement about the packet that was waiting for us when we got here this evening.
Right, so, I've delivered a couple of things to you, and one of them is a letter from the town attorney that is addressing, can you reach back into expired plans and reference material, or is that a problem for planning board members who weren't there at the time? So, he has provided you that advice. I think this applicant has tried very hard to bring you a complete application. There was a submission made, and you received that, and I put together the, the list of things that were originally approved and the list that were submitted in 2019, and then last Thursday, the applicant provided another package of information, which I realize you haven't had a chance to look at, it was on your table tonight, but I also did give you one of these sheets right here, and this shows you that pretty much everything that was missing, as in the memo that I gave you, has now been provided in the packet. as in the memo that I gave you, has now been provided in the package in front of you. The only item that identified as missing was something that's called generator specifications, and I think Catherine's going to address that. That actually wasn't generators, it was heat pumps, and I believe that they're ready to provide that information to you as well. So, what you might be asked to do tonight is to accept the information that you've just received, even though you haven't seen it, and based on that, deem it complete and then table it to next month. And that would give you time to review everything. It gives staff time to look at everything, and then this applicant could still be on track for getting a reapproval after a public hearing next month.
Does everybody, anybody have any serious issue with that? Okay, so you can come on up, introduce yourself, and...
I am Catherine Detmer from Arctite Architects, and I'm here with Steve Bushey with Goral Palmer. And would you rather I go through this, or should I go ahead and hand over? It is the heat pump specification that lists the decibel level to show it in compliance with the standards.
You can hand it to us after.
After?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'm going to pass this off to Steve to begin with, but I am just going to point out, we're talking about twelve-twenty-six Shore Road. Most of you have seen this presentation a few times, but I know we have new members. Most of the work is being done on Building A up here along twelve-twenty-six. Here's the town hall right here where we are tonight, and then there is also a second building on the property. We're calling that Building B, and that's in discussion because of some issues from a previous owner, so we will look at that. But Steve's going to talk you through the site plan first.
Evening, Steve Bushey with Goral Palmer. Last time I was before the board, I was with Stantec, and you see on the drawings, Stantec logo. I've since changed jobs, but the job has followed me, and so I'll still remain the engineer of record on the drawings. The site plan that we had presented previously included the initial, or the, the larger building here that will be renovated, and Catherine will speak more to what the renovations are involved with the change of uses and so forth along Shore Road. Principally, the, the large pieces of site work include the parking lot here and garage area here. Today, there's a existing smaller parking lot just off of the building in the back. Again, here is the town's recycling area over to the side. So, there's a right-of-way or an easement area here that benefits the town, that allows access through the property over to the recycling area and, and the town property that will continue in use, and that will provide access to this parking lot here. Going to have a total of thirty-four parking spaces, and previously, we had outlined the idea of, under code, I believe, the requirement for the land uses that are being proposed was, at least for the front building here, a total of thirty-six spaces, and we were granted approval for thirty-four spaces with some shared use, given what the uses will be, including some residential and then office and potential retail, recognizing in evening hours, the retail won't likely need those spaces, so we have ample enough parking here, given the surface parking and then the garage area along here. Overall, we do have a, a small amount of increase in previous area, and that's resulting from not only this parking lot, but the building pieces. We're going to be removing a piece of building here, and again, Catherine will go through this a little bit more closely, adding a piece of building here and then out in the frontage here. Principal piece on stormwater management will be the fact that we're proposing this as a porous asphalt parking lot. It's not real common here in, in this region, but becoming a little bit more used among projects. I've done it now a couple of times on some larger-scale parking lots. This isn't all that large, but it was, from my perspective, from the design side of things, in a pretty appropriate space in that area to be able to use this porous asphalt. Basically, the rain will hit the porous asphalt surface and be able to percolate down through it. It's a special asphalt mix, not like the traditional asphalt that you see more often not being placed in our, in our streets and sidewalks. This is, has a porous component. Water will simply go right down through it, and then we have a fairly thick section of gravels and filtering layer and an underdrain layer beneath that to capture and filter the water to provide the treatment. So, it is a, an approved BMP. Historically, it hasn't been all that common because it hasn't been a supplier of the asphalt mix, but Shaw Brothers over in Gorm has a new batch plant, and they are now becoming more and more commonly a provider of porous mix. My largest project to date that used that approach was the Department of Human Services building over by the Portland Jet Port. That was a pretty sizable parking lot. I think we had over three hundred vehicles in that lot, and about seventy-five percent of that lot is porous, so you go out there at a point in time in the rainfall event, and unlike a regular parking lot where you see a lot of water sheeting off and going to catch basins, basically, the water just sheets down and goes in through the asphalt. So, it's a, a nice mix, and what will happen, we'll capture the water here. We do have an underdrain system, and that will ultimately make its way out through some piping and then discharge at the low end of the site out behind Building B. Site plan elements include also a sidewalk connection along this access route, a couple of ADA parking spaces here, and to the point that Catherine just mentioned about the heat pumps, we have heat pumps located here next to an access walkway to the basement space of the building. Site plan elements that were also discussed and approved originally included some additional plantings here. We have a fifty-foot-wide retained buffer along this east side of the property, and to supplement the fact that we have this garage space, the approval originally accounted for an additional six tree plantings here, evergreen tree-type plantings, and we have other landscape elements and measures here that are shown throughout the, the site plan up along in, in front of the building here and in between the parking lot, and then up against this Building B area. I'll note, parking-wise, Building B has a two-space garage as well as three exterior spaces to meet the supply requirements under code for that building space of, of additional five parking spaces. Building up front is the primary development piece, benefits as an existing building with existing utilities. Water, sewer, sewer exits the building today with a lift station located up in front of the building, and that pumps the wastewater up along Shore Road to seventy-seven. Water's going to be improved here with a new water line for domestic and fire supply systems into the building. Power will remain unchanged and exit, or enter this side of the building right in this location. That was the site plan. Here is the grading and drainage plan, and again, talking about the porous pavement surface and the series of underdrain pipes. We also have a few structures to capture water that would be in a little landscaped area here, another little low landscaped area here that will discharge through a small series of pipes, ultimately to a small swale, and this is the low part of the site today. Generally speaking, grading from the back half of the existing building over to this area, that will be the principal area being reworked, and we noted that and talked about that a little bit when there was a sidewalk previously. And again, coming back to the fact that the garage space is in here, and what was going to be happening right up against that fifty-foot buffer area, the decision of putting in some supplemental tree plantings here was one that the board at the time felt was a necessary condition, so that was shown on that, that previous plan I just showed you. So, those are the, the basics here into the site plan piece, and grading and drainage and utilities. Felt that we did go through a few back and forths back in that original timeframe with the town's peer-reviewed consultant. I think we addressed and tightened up a lot of minor comments, and got the, the plan set to a point where we were pretty well ready for construction, and unfortunately, we've just had a little bit of a gap in time here. So, I'll let Catherine take the rest of the presentation from there.
And I do want to make one adjustment to what Steve said. There were some recalculations done on the square footage of Building B, and when they were done, it turned out that Building B actually needs six spaces. Your table does match this. We're asking for one shared space for Building B. So, the table says five spaces are existing, one shared. So, I'm going to talk through Building A to start because that's really where our work is taking place. This is the existing basement plan, which I'm bringing up the demo plan because of there, it was a question about what was going on in that space. There is an existing kitchen down in there, and that is going to be demoed as shown here, the partitions. And then there is also a porch out back that's going to come off. And then when we look at the new basement plan, you can see the entire area is used for storage for the uses above. Everything is denoted as storage or utility space, and then the two red boxes are, are outlining where the additions will go within the basement. But just to clarify, the kitchen will be removed, all storage within the basement. When we get to the first floor, so currently, the building is one floor with a basement. We are going to demo that entire first floor. Most, we're going to demo a lot of the foundation because it's not in good shape and repour it, and we're going to go up to three stories. The first story is here. We're going to have two office spaces and then a retail slash restaurant up front. So, we have a large office space here. We have a smaller office out back towards the parking lot, and then we have a retailer/restaurant. We're listing it as restaurant because that's a more restrictive use, so we want to go in with that because it's easier to go from a restaurant to retail than from retail to restaurant. Then we have a corridor that runs all the way through the building so that you can come in off of Shore Road, access any of the uses, and go out to the parking. Everybody has, or I'm sorry, not everyone, the larger office space has an exterior door and an interior, as does the retail. They have an exterior off of the access road and an interior off of the corridor. And then there's a main door out back off that corridor that will get you into the small office, and we have two stairwells down from the floors above, one of which has an elevator, so you have two means of egress. When we go upstairs, both of the upper floors each have four units. These are two-bedroom apartments ranging around twelve-hundred square feet, each with an exterior deck, and you can see that main corridor running down with the two egress stairs and the elevator. When we get to the elevations, you can see we've differentiated that first floor from the upper floors. They're differentiated inside by use, but we also are using the color. We have certain teed shingles on here, and we're using a charcoal gray at the base going up to a cedar look above. And on top of that, the windows, although they line up for balance within the building, the first floor is going to be casement windows with no divisions, and the upper floor will have divided light double-hung windows. In designing this roof line and how the upper portion works, because we're going into that residential use and we're trying to tie into the neighborhood along Shore Road, it has more of a cottage look, so we're using the dormer effect. And even though we have walls that continue all the way up to get our space inside, we're adding an eve around to ma, match up those lines and create that cottage look. The, the garage out back, the eight bays, we're going with more of the carriage house look. We're sloping that roof and adding a decorative door along, along with some lighting that will cast down, we'll see in some renderings. So, if we look at the renderings of this building, this is coming along Shore Road from the resident, residential end heading towards seventy-seven, so we have that office space coming forward here, and then as you get over towards the retail portion, you can see there's even more glazing because that would be the livelier of the two corners, but it's nicer to have the quiet office with the larger wing protruding forward up against the residential neighbor. And then we continued around, around here. You can see that central door with a path off of Shore Road inviting pedestrian access or bicycle access for anybody using that office space or restaurant. Just an evening shot showing that lighting. We'll have some lighting up on the decks cascading down and some under the entryways. And then I did just drop the building into actual site photos so that you could see how this surrounding foliage would look, and the lines are out front, just being more realistic about it. Then if we head towards Townmore, there is that corner coming forward with the retail/restaurant. It has its entry over here on the access road. These spaces out front, although they're not allowed by zoning, if they're new, there are already existing spaces, so we're using those to get some nice ADA space with good access to the doors. And again, dropping that rendering into an actual photo so that you can see the existing trees out front are remaining. Now, we're rounding around the back. Here's the parking area with plantings, but we have a door into that larger office space, and then we have a door here that accesses the main hallway so that you can get to any of the businesses or get to the vestibule to go upstairs. Zooming back more, you can see the garage that is clad in the same material, tying it into the residential portion as each of the units would have one interior garage space. And then just an evening shot from out back. And now Building B. We were not doing any work on Building B, and that's where some of this got confusing in the first round. We were given drawings, and when we scaled the building off of those drawings, we had a certain square footage. It turned out that the building was built differently than it was in the drawings that we had originally, but we weren't able to get our hands on the true drawings of Building B. And using the way that Cape Elizabeth requires us to calculate the square footage, we recalculated that, and the building was larger than it was first submitted to be. So, these are drawings showing both levels with the uses proposed and the square footage that exists today. On the first floor of that building, there is a kitchen. The kitchen, existing kitchen is shown up here. It has a range, it has a dishwasher, a full-size fridge. It was deemed by the town that this is out of scale for an office use, especially a small office such as this, because it is common to have kitchens in offices, but we are happy to scale that back. This is showing what is to be done with that kitchen, removing the full-size fridge, removing the range and the dishwasher, and then in place of that range, we're going to put an undercounter fridge. This was run by Ben McDougal, your code officer, and I, in your packet, there's a letter included that states that he's fine with this plan. I'm not going to talk about this, unless you want me to, I can come back to it, but our original submission did go through all of the lighting styles proposed for the building, including the parking that are matching downtown lights, signage lighting. We did have a lighting plan showing it being in compliance with requirements. We located and sized all of our signs along the building. And that is what I have tonight. I didn't want to go into too much detail, as I know you've seen this a few times, but for those of you who haven't, please feel free to ask questions. I have more slides later of what you have in your submission to answer any questions that you might have. And do you want me to bring this up now?
That's fine, here.
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to make a public comment on the issue of completeness? This is not in support of or against the project, just whether the application is complete. Okay, seeing none. Does anybody on the board have any questions about the completeness of this? Do the two members who this is new to have any issues with being asked to judge on the completeness?
I would say we have sent people away for not submitting things on time, so, however, that was a, a project that we were going to talk about completion and then actually approve in the same time, so we at least have time to look through this. I guess the rest of the board has seen the complete package in the, in the past, presuming it hasn't changed, and Maureen is vouching for its completeness here. I'm, I'm sort of wavering, to be honest, but...
Well, you don't have, you actually don't have to vote for completeness, right?
He can deem, he can vote for that to be complete. Yeah, you don't, don't feel like you...
We won't feel, yeah.
I'm telling you that my review, not having been here before, I, I spent a lot of time making a list of everything we had before, and it looks like everything that we had before has now been submitted, but that, you don't have to take my statement for that. You can make your own call.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Patrick Tinsman for reapproval of a mixed-use office/restaurant/A apartment development located at twelve-twenty-six Shore Road be deemed complete.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? One opposed. Great, okay, so does anybody want to make a motion to table?
No, are there any, are there any questions that anyone wants to...
Oh, okay, sorry. Oh, okay, sorry. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, Carol Anne looks for hers. I just, I know one of the big things that we had already looked at this was that Building B, so I'm happy with the applicant for making the necessary requirements that kind of got everything hung up in the first place. And I appreciate them going to the town and working it out with the code enforcement officer, which I think was the hang-up.
When I was reviewing this earlier today, the parking space calculations, I found two different numbers. On one sheet, it was five, and on one sheet, it was six. And I, now I can't find where my differences were. But now it's six spaces for Building B and 38, or 36 for Building A.
36 for A, asking two shared, and six for B, asking one shared.
Okay.
Just, the total number of spaces on the site have never changed.
Okay.
It's the number of shared spaces that are being requested.
Okay.
Just to comment on that, given the, what has been represented for the limited uses of B, I'd be fine with shared spaces.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I have the right number in my head. I'll do it.
I think if Jim says something, everybody hears it, so.
Motion to schedule a public hearing. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Patrick Tinsman for reapproval of a mixed-office/restaurant, eight-apartments development located at 1,226 Shore Road be tabled to the regular May 21st, 2019, meeting of the planning board, at which time a public hearing will be held.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous? Okay, next item is 69 Beach Bluff Terrace Private Accessway Reapproval. Peter Weir is requesting reapproval of a private accessway permit for a new lot located behind 69 Beach Bluff Terrace. The application was originally approved on December 19th, 2017. Extensions were granted on April 23rd, 2018, and September 18th, 2018. The approval expired on December 17th, 2018, when the plan was not recorded. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 1979 Private Accessways. So why don't you go ahead and summarize the project? Introduce yourself.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jim Logan. I am the wetland scientist of record for this project, also soil scientist, as well as the site evaluator that prepared the septic system design for Mr. Weir on this lot. Tonight, I'm here with JP, who is a representative from Dustin Roma's company, the engineering firm that prepared the rest of the plans. And I hope the board will bear with me, because I'm not the computer guy. I'm the soil guy that twists and augers well, and any technical questions hopefully JP can address. As the chair suggested, this is a project previously approved by the board. We trust for this go-around that we have made a complete submission, to my understanding. It's, the submission was deemed by Maureen, I think this time around, to be more complete in its scope. I'm trusting that we've accomplished that task. Assuming as well, since that's the case, that the previously submitted information, which was approved by a previous board, understanding that there are two new board members, that hopefully that information is in good shape in addition to the original information. I believe there was quite a bit of additional legal information that was prepared and provided to address the easements and so forth. Some of that deliberation took place after that official, original approval. So we're in the hopes that you'll be able to find the application complete, and perhaps we could move to a public hearing if we're lucky. If you care to have some background, in 2017, I mapped the wetlands out there. There is a critical wetland, one, off-site on the adjacent Robinson Woods. Due to the sort of off-site nature of that and the difficulty of mapping that, I obtained an oversight, an overview by the state soil scientist, David Roke. His memo was in the original submission packet. He helped establish that beginning point of measurement for the 250-foot-wide critical wetland setback that is depicted on the plan. The proposed building site is completely outside of that. Also on this lot is a small drainage swale, a stream that was previously determined by DEP to be a Natural Resources Protection Act stream that would typically get a 75-foot required setback, a part of our earlier proposal. And what is still currently approved by DEP was a reduction from that 75-foot required setback. I believe we've reduced it and gotten the nod from DEP to be as close as 40. And that 40-foot is applying to the edge of the lawn or graded area and not the corner of the dwelling. The dwelling will in fact be further than that from the stream. Adjacent to that small stream is a small piece of Resource Protection II wetlands, and we have maintained a buffer to that as well. There is a line of large stones to be placed at the edge of the proposed building area to make clear to any, either the current owner or any future owner, the limits of where that grading needs to stay to maintain that buffer to the RP II wetland and the stream. Questions from the board?
This is just on completeness, right?
Yeah, it's just on completeness. Is that your presentation? Do you have anything else?
That's about what I have for tonight. If the board has more questions, I'm available.
Well, actually, I do have something that may be considered completeness. There was a letter in here from Portland Water District about public fire protection that says, "It is your responsibility to contact the capels of the fire department and ensure that the project is adequately served by existing and proposed hydrants." Is there, did I miss, is there actually some letter or communication that's submitted?
Can I help?
Yeah, Maureen.
I want to suggest that that is a standard language in all Portland Water District letters, and that this was reviewed by the fire chief, and he did not request a new hydrant be installed, which means there's a hydrant somewhere within 1,000 feet of this existing property.
Yeah, I actually did see that. It was like 700 some odd feet.
560 feet from the third.
Okay.
Okay, so that, all right, that's fine.
Any questions on completeness? Okay, is there any member of the public here who has a comment on the completeness of this? All right, seeing none, are there any mo, is there a motion?
Motion. Motion for completeness. Be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Peter Weir for a private access permit for a new lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace be deemed complete.
Second.
It's Dan's turn. Hold on a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Okay, because this is an expedited review, we are going to move directly to the public comment. I'm sorry, public hearing. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. And we open the discussion to the board. Do any of you have any questions?
Just, this is for reapproval. I remember being as a member of the board when we did go over this, and I remember the site walk was very involved, and the applicant was very involved at that time, and we approved it at that time. So my opinion hasn't changed on this, and I'm supporting it.
Ditto.
I noted that Steve Harding's only comment was that you've included his, you've made the update relative to the one comment he made back in December of 2018, so. And I also was on the board at the time, went through the site walk and all the reviews, and there are no changes to this other than the ones that were requested as condition, any potential condition of approval, and so I'm fine.
Okay, anybody wish to make a motion?
I'll get a motion. Motion for approval, finding the facts. Peter Weir is requesting reapproval. Number one, Peter Weir is requesting reapproval of a private access permit for a new lot located behind 69 Beach Bluff Terrace, which requires compliance with Section 19-7 Private Accessways. Two, the proposed lot shall be improved with only one dwelling unit and related accessory building and uses. Number three, the private accessway shall be located within a dedicated 30-foot-wide right-of-way. Number four, the sub-base shall be constructed of gravel meeting MDOT, specification 703-06, type D, with a depth of at least 15 inches and having a width of at least 18 feet. Number five, the travelway shall be constructed with a minimum of three inches of crushed gravel, having a width of at least 14 feet with the remaining width of a gravel-based loam and, loamed and seated. Number six, within 10 feet of the edge of the street paving, the accessway shall be paved with three inches of asphalt paving, a maximum grade within the first 50 feet of the edge, and the street paving shall not exceed 5%. A pavement radius at the intersection with the street shall be 20 feet. Number seven, gutter drainage along the street shall not be allowed to sheet across the face of the intersection, and the proposed design will keep drainage from the private accessway from running into the public street. Number eight, a turnaround meets the requirement of the fire chief. Number nine, the accessway is located so that the site distance conforms to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Number 10, a private accessway shall serve only one lot. Number 11, the planning board has not reduced the requirements of Section 19-7-9D4 to a lesser standard. Number 12, adequate disposal of sewage shall be provided as evidenced by submission of a completed HHE 200 form. Number 13, the, a building development is depicted wherein the house and accessory buildings will be located on a lot demonstrating conformance with the setback requirements of the district in which it is located and any natural constraints, and that the house site will be buffered from abutting residential properties. Number 14, the application substantially complies with Section 19-7-9 Private Accessways and 19-8-3 Resource Protection Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Peter Weir for a private accessway permit for a new lot located at the rear of 69 Beach Bluff Terrace be approved, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the following deeds and agreements be submitted in the form acceptable to the town attorney and signed by the applicant. That is a road maintenance agreement, a rights of access for parcel B over the private accessway on parcel A, a deed conveying Thompson Road to parcel B, an emergency access deed over the turnaround to the town. And number two, that there be no issuance of a building permit or alteration of the site until the plans and materials have been revised to satisfy the above conditions in the plan, has been signed by the planning board and recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous?
Thank you very much, board members.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Last.
Joe.
And the most.
May I recuse myself from this item as one of the owners of the property on which the well was situated?
Okay.
Objection.
Anybody object?
Objection.
One, two. All right, we still have a quorum left, right? We have five members left, so. Okay. Good. Next item, the Well Site Plan Amendments. Jason Williams is requesting amendments to the site plan approval for the well, a 44-seat farm-to-table restaurant located at 19 Wells Road, to provide a public sewer connection, add a dumpster, and add a porch. The application will be reviewed for compliance with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Okay, so can you introduce yourself and summarize the project?
Hello, my name is Jason Williams. I'm the chef-owner at the Well at Jordan's Farm. I'm here to ask for approval for three amendments to my existing site plan. The first being a town sewer connect. So if you can see on the plans, it's a 245-foot pipe from the restroom to the sewer connect on Wells Road. It's a gravity-fed sewer connect, done by LP Murray &amp; Sons, who's familiar with that, with a Y-connect that leads to the restaurant, so that I can add a grease trap and the necessary, the necessary stuff to attach to the town sewer that way. The second amendment would be a wraparound porch on the existing porch. As you can see, it would be adding 16 feet from the existing porch and then back 20 feet, as well as, so it kind of covers the, wraps around the existing trailer restaurant. And then the third thing is just a dumpster down in the employee parking lot. That would be in a wooden enclosure of, a 6-by-12 wooden enclosure for a dumpster. So that's what I'm hoping for.
Is it a covered porch or a deck?
Covered porch. So just, just as, if you have pictures of the existing, we're going to try to match it. The same architects or the same builders are going to do the work, same seamless metal roof. Colors should all be the same.
Okay, is there anybody here to make a public comment about? I'm sorry, are you done?
I'm done, yeah.
Is there anyone here to make a public comment regarding completeness of the application? Okay, seeing none. Does the board have any questions?
It's a screen-in porch, correct?
Correct.
Dan?
Yeah, sure. So, so you're putting in a sewer connection. What do you have there today?
Right now, it's gray water that we pump, so. Yeah, it would be a lot easier.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Nope? Okay, do I have a motion for completeness?
Yes.
A motion for the board to consider completeness be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Jason Williams for amendments to the previously approved site plan for the well, a 44-seat restaurant located at 19 Wells Road, to connect a restaurant to public sewer, add a dumpster, and replace 12 picnic table seats with a 10, with 10 porch seats, be deemed complete.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. I'll open the meeting to public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant?
No supporter of that, no chance, Drena.
Okay, seeing none, the hearing is closed. And turn it over to the board. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
So you're getting rid of a couple of the picnic tables?
Exactly.
All right, and then the seat's gonna, and what's on the porch?
I'll put like bar seats, we could get a bar counter like it has right now, just to make up for the seats, but that way we won't have to worry about bugs and rain and all that other fun stuff. and all that other fun stuff.
Anybody else?
Alright, I got a...
We got a motion? Dan? Oh, wait. Hold on, Dan. Maureen?
Did everybody note that the applicant is asking for a change in the location of the dumpster?
Oh, yes. Are you asking for a change or an option to put it in either place?
Uh, option to spin it, just...
So, he's looking for a change?
Yeah, a change.
So, and this little sheet, it's like way down in the corner right here. Right now, the dumpster is perpendicular to Wells Road, and he's looking to put it kinda diagonal to Wells Road. And you can't see on this photocopy, but you can see in the, the plans that he submitted, that's a lined parking area. So, it's, it's basically on the corner of the gra, of the gravel base of the parking area. It's not taking up a parking space, and in theory, you can probably service it by a truck. Does that make sense?
Is, is it angled like that to get a bank, better angle for the truck to come in and grab it?
Exactly, yeah, so they don't have to come into the property too far, so it doesn't have to put a ton of gravel down in an area.
And is that, is, is, can you see it from the road?
Um, not once it grows in. You can't really see it from the road, but...
It's supposed to be, it's gonna be screened with a stockade fence.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
There'll be a wooden fence surrounding it, so you won't be able to see it.
And just so, 'cause I know Wells Road pretty well. Once summer comes, that's pretty, there's a good buffer between those that you almost can't even see into that back employee lot.
Exactly.
Maureen?
So, if someone was gonna make a motion, they'd probably wanna somehow make sure the motion made clear that you're accepting the revised dumpster location.
Don't look at me.
Dan? Did you get that?
So, the question to the bo, to the board is, are we gonna accept the revised dumpster location at an angle?
Yeah. Does, does anybody have a problem with that?
I don't.
No, I don't.
No?
No.
So, yes. So, do you wanna make a motion?
Motion for approval. Findings of fact. Number one, Jason Williams is requesting amendments to the site plan approval for the well, a 44-seat farm-to-table restaurant located at 19 Wells Road to provide a public sewer connection, add a dumpster, and add a porch, which requires review for compliance with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Number two, the site plan amendments reflects the natural capabilities of the site to support the development. Number three, access to the development will be on roads with adequate capacity to support the traffic generated by the development. Access into and within the site will be safe. Parking will be provided in accordance with Section 19-7-8 Offsite Parking. Number four, the site plan amendments do provide for a system of pedestrian ways within the development. Number five, the site plan amendments do provide for adequate collection and discharge of stormwater. Number six, the site plan amendments will not cause soil erosion based on the erosion plan submitted. Number seven, this restaurant will be provided with an adequate quantity and quality of potable water. Number eight, the restaurant will provide for the adequate sewage disposal. Number nine, the restaurant will be provided with access to utilities. Number 10, the site plan amendments will not locate, store, discharge materials harmful to surface or groundwater. Number 11, the site plan amendments will provide for adequate disposal of solid waste. Number 12, the site plan amendments will not adversely affect the water quality or shoreline of any adjacent water body. Number 13, the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capability to complete the project. Number 14, the restaurant will provide for adequate exterior lighting without excessive illumination. Number 15, the site plan amendments will provide a vegetative buffer throughout and around the site and screening as needed. Number 16, the restaurant will not substantially increase noise levels and cause human discomfort. Number 17, storage of the exterior materials on the site that may be visible to the public will be screened by fencing or landscaping. Number three, the application substantially complies with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. Therefore, be it ordered that based on the plans and materials submitted and the facts presented, the application of Jason Williams for amendments to the previously approved site plan for the well, a 44-seat restaurant located at 19 Wells to connect the restaurant to public sewer, add a dumpster, and replace 12 picnic table seats with 10 porch seats be approved, subject to the following condition. Number one, that the plans be revised to address the comments of the town engineer in his letter dated April 10th, 2019.
Can I make a friendly amendment? Does second number three be amended to number 18? It's the one on the, this page right here. The application substantially complies with Section 19-9 Site Plan Regulations. You just jumped from 17 to three, and you called it three.
Oh, accepted.
So, I would second.
You're seconding, okay. And then, can I offer a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. You add an additional condition that the, the dumpster be sited at the angle. How can I identify this? Maureen?
As submitted.
As submitted.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with that, too.
Okay, so...
I can't wait for the first unfriendly amendment we ever have.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
If you're no longer gonna be BYOB, you might wanna notify people before the summer...
Oh, yeah, it's on there.
Alright, does anyone wanna...
I move we adjourn.
Thank you. Any seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody's seconding, right?
All in favor? All opposed? Alright.